Good afternoon. I'd like to call, to order the up. Hold on. Okay, I can't. I'm hearing too much echo. He's gonna have to mute me. Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay. I'd like to open the meeting of the San Bernardino Community College District Board of Trustees Meeting. And for this meeting, we will have Executive Vice Chancellor Jose Torres in substituting for Chancellor Rodriguez, who is ill. As far as I know, two of our trustees, Dr. Anne Veracel and Mr. Joseph Williams, will not be joining us. And interim President Scott Thayer is represented at this meeting by the Vice President of Instruction, Deena Humboldt. Thank you very much for attending. At this time, I'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Trustee Reyes to lead us in that. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As I understand, we do not have any public comment? No. So we will go on to our agenda. And I would call for a motion and a second for the approval of minutes for the 6th of June.
So moved.
I have.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? None? No discussion? Then I would like to ask for a vote. And I would ask Student Trustee Paul de Rosario. How do you vote?
Aye.
Right. And Student Trustee Robert Alexander.
Aye.
Okay. Doctor, this Trustee Stephanie Houston.
Aye.
Trustee Nathan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Reyes.
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. So the minutes are passed. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to have the presentation and celebrations, the anniversary recognition, and the applause cards. And I think you will see them on your screen. There we go. Thank you. Can we stop at that first one? Can we stop at that first and bring it back up to the first one? If that is Angelita.
That is Angelita.
Yeah. And is that correct?
That is correct.
Fifty?
Fifty-five years. Yes.
Yeah.
She remarried.
Wow. Wow. That is unbelievable. It's unbelievable.
We have eighteen individuals here, Madam Chair, with twenty-plus years of service with our district. It is amazing. So on behalf of district leadership here at SBCD and entire board, congratulations to every single one of you that reached that milestone. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication to our students. And we couldn't do what we do without service such as your service. So thank you all for that kind of service.
And if you noticed, Paula Ferry Milligan also for forty years. And then we have a couple for Francis Torres and Patricia Wall for thirty-seven. I mean, these people are remarkable. They've dedicated their life to the campus and to our students. And I see Gina on there. I'm looking at all these names. These are people I worked with. And I can't believe they're retiring. They're supposed to be a heck of a lot younger than I was. So anyway, thank you for your service. Now, on my agenda, I have, I'm supposed to call on you, Executive Vice Chancellor, to talk about some of the.
I already did.
Okay. Nothing more?
Nothing more.
On our action item, I'm asking for a motion and a second before we can have any discussion on the 2024-2028 five-year construction plan. So if I could have a motion and a second so we can start discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And any discussion on that? No question? Nope? Okay. Then let's take a roll call vote. And we'll start with our student trustees. Student Trustee Del Rosario.
Aye.
Student Trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Student, Trustee Reyes.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Houston.
Aye.
And then the Chair votes aye. Thank you. The second item is board policies, and this is the second reading. And let's, I need a motion and a second before we can have any discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. And any discussion? These are board policies that were presented to us for our information, for our perusal and for questions the last time. And at this time, they will become final with our vote. No discussion, so we'll take a roll call vote. Student Trustee Del Rosario.
Aye.
Trustee, Student Trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Trustee Reyes.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Houston.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you. The other one is, which is Action Item C, Resolution 2022 to 07 to 14 BOT dash oh-one, Increase in the Annual Compensation of the San Bernardino Community College Board of Trustees. So I would ask for a motion and a second before we can have discussion.
So moved.
I need a second. Did I get a second?
A second.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Could you tell us what the percentage is of increase? Executive Vice Chancellor?
It's five, five percent.
What?
Five percent. Five percent.
Five percent?
Five percent.
Five percent. Which constitutes about twenty dollars a month? I just wanted you to know that.
Don't spend all, don't spend all the ones.
We're not going to the Bahamas.
See, this is where, can I make a comment? I mean, it's just.
All right.
I know that there's a process here, but can you imagine it's gonna go out to the voters and say the Board of Trustees got a pay increase? But they never say that we only got like a two-dollar pay increase. And yet, the people that are running for this term, like Stephanie and those people, they're gonna hit you hard, saying, well, you know, how dare you pay increase with that? So a lot of times, I turned it down, to be honest with you. But I think that there is a protocol that we can't do that or something? I don't know.
You have, you have a vote. Okay. So we will take, since, is there any other discussion or questions or clarifications or statements? None? Okay. Student Trustee Alexander.
Four.
Student Trustee Del Rosario.
Aye.
Student Trust, uh, no, Trustee Reyes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Houston.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you. Then we're going to the consent agenda. And I understand that there is, this, and the consent agenda is expected to be routine and non-controversial. It will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any member of the Board, staff member, or citizen may request that an item be removed from this section for discussion. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Item C two, please.
C two. Okay. Any others? Okay. So could I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of C two?
I move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item C two.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. Let's take a roll call vote on it. Student Trustee Alexander.
Four.
Student Trustee Del Rosario.
Aye.
Trustee Reyes.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Houston.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you. Can we go now to that item that was pulled? And I need a motion, or I need a motion, right?
I move approval for item C two.
Madam Chair, I have a question of our legal, please. We only have three trustees. Can we move this item towards the end as when Trustee Longville arrives?
Yeah, you certainly can do that.
Okay, we move this to the end, Madam Chair.
So we'll, we'll move this to the end of the, of the public meeting.
Yes, that'll be just fine.
Thank you. Thank you. And so at this time, we will have reports. So Board Committee reports. Trustee Houston. I think we had a Finance Committee meeting.
We did. We had a Board Finance Committee meeting today, and we got to hear a highlight of our local business outreach efforts since the start of the Measure CC Bond Construction Program three years ago. So we had our Local Business Outreach Coordinator, Unes Canella, report on the highlights of those efforts, including fifty-nine percent of the construction workers residing locally and thirty-nine million dollars being contracted to local vendors. The committee also received an update on the state budget from our Executive Vice Chancellor Torres. So the 2022-2023 budget items have, are, have been pretty favorable. The education budget looks pretty good. So there is a cost of living adjustment of six-point-five-six percent, which is statewide about four-hundred-and-ninety-three million dollars. And the estimated portion of that that will come to our district is about six-point-nine million. There's also some growth funding of point-five percent, which statewide is about twenty-six-point-seven million. And our portion is a little bit less than half a million there. The basic allocation increase is about two-hundred million statewide, and the allocation or estimated portion of that that would come to our district is about two-point-eight million. And the base funding increase is four-hundred million statewide and about five-point-six million for the portion that will come to San Bernardino Community College District. There are some one-time funding highlights, including deferred maintenance, COVID-19 block grant funding for pandemic issues, support for retention and enrollment, and modernizing technology and data protection efforts. And so those one-time dollars are also a real benefit and advantage to the district. And within the dollars that are allocated for local district efforts and initiatives, there is included specifically fifteen million dollars for the local support of KBCR. So all good news on the budget front in terms of the overview information. As a committee and actually as an entire board, we will have a deeper dive study session on August the 25th, where we'll have more information from the state on the, on the details, and then more analysis from our team, our executive team, in terms of how the, what the impact and what that looks like for the college district. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee?
Yes, I'd like to.
Trustee Reyes.
Give you an update that for the Legislative Committee, we didn't physically meet today. But I have a report here. As we talked before, we wanted to give an update legislative report. In January, the Board of Trustees approved a 2020, 2022 legislative advocacy priorities. One was to promote student equity. Second, increase public funding for student success. Three, increase state support for college affordability and student-based needs. Since January, the Board of Trustees, the Chancellors have advocated in a very good and very effective way how to get federal and state funding levels to accomplish the win for the students. I have to announce that we had a major, major, major victory with the leadership of a chancellor and the vice chancellors and our team. We have a great team. We were successful in advocating for a record, I think this is the second largest grant that we've gotten, the one that was FEMA, forty-five million dollars. But this is fifteen million dollars is gonna go for KBCR. So this is going to open up opportunities for the things that we want to do, which is to advocate for our students, for programs and so forth. And we also are going to be able to do some, some creative things with the leadership of the KBCR. Tony, you're gonna be very much involved with this. And of course, I feel a little bit uncomfortable because we want to thank the Majority Leader by the name of Eloise Reyes, who advocated for this. Because this was a separate item. It was a request coming from her, not from the Governor, but from the, eventually the Governor had to vote for it. But in, by golly, I remember when Jose and Diana came to talk to me. Do you think you could talk to Majority Leader? I says, oh, we just got forty-four million dollars not too long ago, and you want me to do that? I can't do that. I didn't think it would, it would be realistic, to be honest with you. But never be afraid and never hesitate to ask if they're doing it for the right reasons. And God bless us that we were able to get that fifteen million dollars. So I think that we're gonna do, we want to take KBC, KBCR to the highest level. This is just amazing, amazing. So anyway, that's just, this will also allow us to keep PBS, NPR at KBCR. And we will also increase the resources expanded on Hen's experience for total student job in California, billion-dollar media. With this idea of the Media Academy, I think we have a golden opportunity to take it to the next level. And with the right leadership from, from KBCR station, from administration, we have a great opportunity to really do some wonderful things. The second major victory is that the Governor approved the Cal Grant Reform, and that's a major victory for us. Our district is, was part of the statewide coalition to fix our financial aid system to help more low-income students to pay for college and career training. And again, I want to commend our team. That's why I feel so comfortable that our administration is doing so well in educating and informing our students. I also like to, to thank KBCR again for allowing the California Attorney General to come and speak and do a program. Lieutenant Governor was also part of the discussion there. And this is where I think we can really use KBCR to really inform the public to participate, get students involved, and do some wonderful things. So I'm very pleased that we're going in the right direction, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let me call on Vice Chancellor, Executive Vice Chancellor Torres to give a report on behalf of Trustee Veracel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a report, last statement from Trustee Veracel, who couldn't be with us today. And I'm just gonna read it. Although, 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 I am unable, I'm not, I can't read. I am unable to attend today's meeting. I did not want to delay extending my thanks to the amazing staff at Valley College for their assistance with the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra July 2nd concert, Under the Stars, which was held on Valley's state-of-the-art football field. Interim President Scott Thayer was the ultimate leader, providing oversight to Valley's inaugural Summer Fest alongside the Symphony's inaugural summer concert, not an easy task. His leadership set the tone for the overall success of the many activities involved in this partnership that brought so many to our beautiful campus. Mr. Paul Bratton coordinated and publicized the Summer Fest event, ensuring representation from alumni and student groups, and providing food trucks and kids' activities. Mr. Robert Jenkins oversaw the many facilities activities, dressing rooms, rehearsal spaces, the football field, tables, chairs, and area dividers, and so much more. Mr. Albert Camacho led the facilities team in concert day, ensuring everything went off smoothly. This gentleman and their staff could not have been more helpful or attentive. Even our maestro, who curates concerts worldwide and has extremely high expectations, was overwhelmed with a level of exceptional professionalism displayed. What I most appreciated was that I was allowed to take off my trustee hat, just, and just be a project partner working to grow our FDS alongside Valley's truly outstanding people. My sincere thanks to all.
Yes. It was a wonderful concert. I unfortunately was in New Orleans and did not attend. However, I gave my tickets to two students, and they thoroughly enjoyed it. Thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed it. It was wonderful. The next item is the Chancellor's report. If you notice, this is not Chancellor Rodriguez.
I'm changing my name.
Look a little different.
Yeah.
But Chancellor Rodriguez is not with us this evening because of illness, and so there's no.
Madam Chair, she's watching, so everyone say hi. Wave, you can do the wave.
Can do the wave.
She'll appreciate it.
All right. So our next report is San Bernardino Valley College Academic Senate. We do not have a report. San Bernardino Valley College Classified Senate. We do not have a report. San Bernardino Valley College Associated Students.
Madam Chair, I'll go and do a report on that for them, if I can. We had our first meeting, which was a workshop a couple weeks ago, just to cheer the new members, to give them a welcome, and the etiquettes of meetings. And we're gonna be having our first official meeting here in about a week to discuss like Club Rush and Welcome Back events at the campus and stuff like that. We're shooting for like in-person and a Zoom Club Rush like we've done last year, just to kind of, kind of transition in, but we're definitely gonna be pushing more in-person events, definitely for the students to encourage them to come back on campus.
And that's the report from Crafton?
Crafton Hills.
Oh, I was, for San Bernardino.
Oh, my bad. My bad. I gotta hit myself. All right.
No, it's a great report. Do we have a report?
Excuse me, as far as I am, we still haven't met yet. We're still working on our first meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Crafton Hills Academic Senate. Nope. Everybody's on vacation. Everybody's on vacation. Crafton Hills Classified Senate. No? Okay. Crafton Hills College Associated Students. And you were just, you just gave it. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. CSEA.
I'll never let you down. Okay. Well, good evening. I just want to give you a little update on how we're coming along, our contract. I believe we're gonna be able to sign off on it on Tuesday. We got the appendices all done. We got new forms in there. Lot of really good contract language, and we're really excited about finally getting that information out to our folks and having a completed contract. Classified Retreat is happening. This is something that we were dreaming about for years, pre-COVID. And we imagined it being, you know, like, like at a hotel maybe, and we have it like a conference, and it was really, we were really excited about it, then COVID hit, and we had to put it on the back burner for, for a few years. And now, the district went ahead and just said, you know what? We're going for it. And we're having the retreat on the 28th. And I think the best part is that, that all classified can attend this time. And that is something that, that Christina worked with the managers on to make sure that this is something that can happen. And I'm very excited about that. It was all the things, the elements of what we wanted. It's coming through. I wasn't involved in it, but we had people who were there, but it's just nice to see it happening and seeing that vision. Unfortunately, I will be at conference during that week, so I won't be able to attend. But others will, will let me know how it goes. And I hope it goes really great. Last time I was up here, I talked about some grievances. All three of them have been resolved. Very, I'm very happy about that. You know, the release time was granted. We have, we had a back pay issue Jose knows about. You know, we had, we had a much larger number in mind when it came to a settlement. And in the end, we came up with an agreement that made sense, that, you know, that was reasonable and made sense for, for the occasion. And so we're working on that one, too. And then some folks doing, in our opinion, what we thought is out-of-class work. And I can tell you a little, a little bit of a story is that we were, we were upset. We thought that, that, that we weren't being listened to. And that's what Christina gets for going away for a month. So we finally had a conversation. We talked in collaborations and found out that the issue was that we both missed something really important. And we're gonna fix it. So we, we recognized the problem, and we recognized that we just need to fix it, and we're gonna go do it. And we owe the quick resolution of this to, to, to your leadership, but also the, the years of trust that Christina Hanna has really been trying to develop with us and with other groups around the district. And I can see it working. And it's, it's just a wonderful thing that I thought you should know. And it has to do with our ability to have open and honest dialogue. It's all about communication. What are our intentions? What are your intentions? And where can we meet in the middle? And I'm just happy to report that that, that's how it's going. It's going, it's getting better, just every day. I know I come up here and, you know, pound my fist sometimes, but I'm very pleased with the direction it is right now. So I want you to know that. I've already told, I told the Chancellor, so she's, okay. And there was something you said earlier, Frank, about the five percent. I wanted to say inflation hurts all of us. So you're, the five percent that the Board gets to increase, to make up for that, I don't think that's a bad thing. But maybe it could be used against in a political way. But I would say that, that brings me into my next topic. I'm kind of all over the place. I think I got like four hours of sleep last night. We have endorsements coming up, and I've asked Mary Valdemar to head up. We're gonna be having a meeting and asking for anybody who is running for Board of Trustees, who is on the ballot, who wants to come to CSEA Chapter and get an endorsement. And then we, we are part of CLC, Inland Empire Labor Council. So if you would like to come and talk to us and speak to our members, we can arrange that. Just let me know. I can give you my contact information. And that's all I really had. Just good stuff. And every time I hear you talk about KBCR, I tear up, because that is just something that was so important to me. And I came up here and I fought, and, and you guys listened. And you guys did an amazing job. And I'm just so happy. I can't wait to see what KBCR is gonna look like once that fifteen million dollars is infused, and we have a good structure and people, and it, I'm just excited. And the staff, the staff are, too. So, and thank you on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. CTA.
Madam Chair?
No report?
No, I just wanted to make a comment on the last report.
Are you asking a question?
No, just a comment.
Just a comment? Okay.
Regarding, regarding the report. It's, it's a great pleasure for me as a board member to hear the kinds of comments that we just received about Ms. Hanna. It, it is, it is one of the most difficult aspects of being. It is, it is one of the most difficult aspects of being the member of a board of a governmental entity is the, the complex, demanding, and often contentious human resources area. And, and I'm, I'm trying to recall and, and you know, I'm, I'm 72. My memory is not as good as I'd like perhaps. But I, I don't recall over the years I have served in various elected offices, such a positive comment about the person who is doing our employee relations work. As I just heard, that's, that's an extraordinary compliment. And, and also, by the way, I want to, I want to note, appreciated the KVCR comments. I had not thought we were quite ready to announce that yet. But I, but if, since it has come up, I'm certainly, I want to, want to be thrilled. I mean, I want to share being thrilled. And I'm kind of picking up from Jose there, kind of, maybe I should hold off not commenting anymore. So, thanks very much.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And congratulations, Vice Chancellor Hannan. Let's see, I'm going to C2. Since we now have Trustee Longville with us, let's go back to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda, it's C2, and it is a contracts at or above $99,100.
I move for approval of item C2.
I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. So let me take a roll call vote on that. And so Student Trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Student Trustee Del Rosario.
Aye.
Trustee Reyes.
Aye.
Trustee Longville.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Aye.
Trustee Houston.
Abstain, please.
Abstain. And the chair votes aye. So we have it. All of our consent items have been passed. So the next item is the Police Officer Association. No, we didn't, did I call CTA?
Yes, you did.
I did. No, no report. Police Officer Association? No report. Okay, San Bernardino Valley College President and we have interim president, but we have Dr. Deena Humble, who's going to be presenting the report.
Thank you, Board President Harrison. I'm very happy to report for San Bernardino Valley College tonight. To support Board Goal One and efforts to eliminate barriers to student access and success, SBVC has been hosting in-person fast-track sessions both in July and August to assist new students with the steps to enrollment so they can register for the fall semester. Academic departments are working collaboratively with student service offices that will be available to answer questions and guide students in their transition to SBVC. Our new student welcome day is scheduled for Wednesday, August 10th, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. You're all invited. Faculty and staff will be available to provide support to ensure students have the information they need to succeed at SBVC. Also, our financial aid office and our district processed and dispersed over $500,000 in scholarships to our students. We are currently working collaboratively with 52 other colleges in California on our Military Articulation Platform, our MAP project, which is a regional and statewide partnership with Norco College as the lead. That, this provides opportunities to match our courses with the ACE platform and other crediting bodies so that our veterans and other students can get the credits that they deserve. I want to thank Dr. Stephanie Lewis, our Dean of Science and Business, in leading that project. Also, we are very pleased that we have our Ethnic Studies courses that have been approved by the CSUs for Area F. And so those are now on the schedule for Fall 2022. Our students will have the opportunity to get that new Area F course credit out of the way and we're really excited. I want to thank our faculty and our Curriculum Committee for working that through and getting that approved, both at the Chancellor's Office and with the CSUs and UCs. I also, the collaborations that take place and the integrations with instruction and student services. I want to thank our interim Vice President of Student Services, Dr. Olivia Rosas, for her leadership in that as well and partnering with me on these efforts. For Board Goals Two and Three, which provide diverse, equitable, inclusive, and also a leader and partner, partner institution. On June 18th, we hosted an inaugural Juneteenth event to serve our SBVC community in the Inland Empire region. We had over 500 guests participate in the day-long program. I hope that many of you saw some of the social media posts about that. The Arts and Humanities Division has established a collaboration with San Bernardino County Behavioral Health Substance Use Disorder Recovery Services that has, with San Bernardino Valley College, that creates opportunities for a creative recovery arts project to increase awareness about the issues surrounding drugs and alcohol abuse in our community. We have successfully worked in this partnership for the past three years in celebration of National Recovery Month. And we are excited to continue this collaboration by presenting our next project, The Sound of Recovery, which will involve musical performances, special songwriting, and it's a concert. It's going to be wonderful. Also, we are beginning our first collaboration with Junior University Musical Theater, hosting and working together with our Theater Department to host our next production in Summer 2023. This is a community theater organization that seeks to have a positive influence on the lives of young people by providing them the opportunity to learn about and participate in all aspects of musical theater. The focus has been providing a highly educational environment along with the professional quality of production, helping increasing the awareness of the importance of the arts in our community. And I want to thank our Dean of Arts and Humanities, Letitia Hector, for leading those efforts. Involving Board Goals One, Three, and Four, SBVC has been awarded a $100,000 California Learning Lab Ceding Strategies Grant to support work centered around closing the equity grant, equity gaps in college calculus. Kudos to Anthony Castro. I have a new name for Anthony. It's Anthony He Can Do Everything Castro for heading up this effort. And a tremendous thank you to all the math and science faculty who will be working together to redesign SBVC's calculus sequence with student success, engagement, active learning, and equity at the forefront. SBVC also submitted a $2.7 million Department of Education Title V Grant proposal focusing on the development of two new AST degree programs, Civil Mechanical Engineering and Information Systems and Cybersecurity, that involve the expansion of institutional support through academic advising, additional supplemental instruction tutors, financial literacy training, culturally and generationally responsive pedagogy, professional development, and guided pathways to graduation. Valley has also submitted a $500,000 grant to the Federal Aviation Administration aimed at leveraging existing relationships with local high schools and K-12 districts to expand our successful aeronautics program to serve an increased number of high school students. In collaboration with Cal State San Bernardino and Cal Poly Pomona, Valley will be submitting, will be submitting as the lead on a $1 million Department of Transportation, University Transportation Center Grant Proposal, which will focus on supporting the use of alternative fuel and electric mass transit vehicles, such as buses, to preserve the environment by mitigating noise and air pollution and reducing air inequality and injustice. I want to thank our Dean of Research Planning, Institutional Effectiveness, and Grants Oversight. I hope I got all that right. Dr. Joanna Oxendine. I want to close, and I know we want to end early, but I'm going to close with two student stories. The first one, Patricia Levi Luna. For Patricia Levi Luna, all the hours on the road have paid off. The sophomore has spent the past year driving from Victorville into San Bernardino Valley College to continue her education and softball career. After a year of classes at SBVC, she is leaving with her associate's degree and a chance to continue her softball career with a full scholarship to Midwestern State University, an NCAA Division II school in Wichita Falls, Texas. Luna, who played shortstop and pitcher for SBVC, finished the season with numbers that put her among the top single-season performers in school history. She finished with .355 batting average and .628 slugging percentage. I'm not sure what that means, but it sounds good. Including 13 doubles and six home runs in 130 plate appearances. Congratulations. And then our next student, Cynthia De Los Santos, was accepted to MIT's Summer Research Program. Cynthia is a single mother, interested in aerospace, first-generation self-identified Mexican-American. She was an STEM scholar and MESA student and went here when there was difficulty identifying how her children would be cared for during her summer research program. Our faculty advocated for childcare and transportation to be included in her research grant. Cynthia is an exemplary example of the power of education and realizing the potential we have to change our students' lives. Basically, the grant and MIT covered her and her two children to travel and stay at MIT for the summer. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
That's wonderful news, wonderful news. Crafton Hills College President.
Good evening. I have one item to report on around Goal Two, which is be a diverse, equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist institution. Earlier this evening in the consent agenda, you approved a slate of new employees for Crafton Hills College. And while Trustee Longville beat me to it, I wanted to give a great thanks to Christina Hannan and her entire team for the work that they've helped us do at the college in revamping our recruitment process and how we attract and interview employees. The employees approved this evening will commit tremendous work to Goal Number Two. And we're really proud of the work that, and the time and the effort that's taken to hire these employees. It takes months and months to bring these employees on. And one position in particular, I'm also really pleased to announce for Crafton Hills College is our Director of Outreach. This is a position that we have been missing at Crafton Hills College and we've been in the works to find the funding for. And thank you for supporting it. Dr. Willie Blackman, who will be coming on and leading in that position, is going to do an outstanding job for us at Crafton and we're really excited to have him. That's my report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
If I may just make a quick comment to follow Dr. Hanam. I was at a meeting earlier today and was excited to learn that one of the leads in the Redlands Bowl's production of The Little Mermaid, which will be the last full week of July, is a Crafton Hills College student. So, and I'm sure that there are probably others in the cast as well. But it was great to hear this student perform today and I'm looking forward to seeing the entire production.
Thank you. Thank you. Executive Vice Chancellor Torres.
No report, Madam Chair.
No report, okay. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources and Police Services, no report. Vice Chancellor of Educational and Student Support Services, no report. Okay. The next item are the informational items. And I ask if there's any information item that, that any of our trustees would like to discuss or ask questions on? None? Okay. Then we will finish the public meeting and adjourn that meeting and go to closed session. So we have the following closed session items. Conference with labor negotiators, Government Code 54957.6. Agency representatives, Diana Z. Rodriguez and Christina Hannan. CSEA, CTA, POA, management slash supervisors, and confidential employees. Also on the agenda, public employees' discipline, dismissal, release, or non-employment, Government Code 54957. And there are two cases in that. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, Government Code 54956.9, D2, one case. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Government Code 54956.9, E3, or D1, one case. Public employees' performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957B1, and the title is Chancellor. Conference with real property negotiator, Government Code Section 54956.8. Properties assessor parcel numbers 0160-183-38 through 160-183-44, Negotiating parties, San Bernardino Community College District, proposed buyer, real estate negotiators, Jose F. Torres, Executive Vice Chancellor, and Diana Z. Rodriguez, Chancellor. Under negotiation, instruction to propose buyer's real property, negotiators will concern price, negotiators will concern price and items of payment associated with the possible purchase of identified properties. And at this time, we are, do we have any requests for public comment on closed? We do not, okay? So I will adjourn this part of the public meeting and we will convene closed session.
Regular business meeting of the San Bernardino Community College Board of Trustees. We are reconvening, and I think we have a readout from our closed session. And Executive Vice Chancellor Torres will be reading it on behalf of trustee Anne Veracel, who is the clerk of the board.
Vice Chancellor Hannah.
Vice Chancellor Hannah, excuse me.
On July 14, 2022, the board unanimously, with five members present and two absent, took action to approve the release of probationary employee number 31236 as senior student services technician, effective July 15, 2022. On July 14, 2022, the board unanimously, with five members present and two absent, took action to approve resolution number 20220714HR02 to non-reelect employee number 25915, contract probationary tutorer, tutoring coordinator at San Bernardino Valley College for the 2023-2024 academic year, and to send notice to the employee. On July 14, 2022, the board met in closed session and determined that the chancellor, Diana Rodriguez, has successfully completed the priority goals and performance objectives assigned to her, receiving accommodation of distinguished, the highest commendation available. The board directed the district's chief negotiator to negotiate with the chancellor with the intent of entering into an updated employment agreement.
Thank you. I think that concludes the business of the open session. We will adjourn the meeting if there is no objection. And our next meeting of the board, business meeting, will be August 11 at 4:00 p.m. in the San Bernardino Community College boardroom. We are adjourned.